Good evening. It's 6:30 PM Wednesday, December 20th, 2023. This is a Carney Board of Argument Meeting. Caller meeting order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any other chance to take roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present. You have a call.
Next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. Public hearing to receive public comments regarding rezoning 2.73 acres along Sandbar Drive, including the area of the existing Platte Clay fueling station from M Industrial to C General Commercial District. So if you are here to speak for or against the proposed rezoning, have you come forward, state your name and address for the record. Open the floor for public comment and input.
My name is Kenneth Brown. I'm the CFO of Platte Clay Electric and Platte Clay Fuels at work. We're just here to get this zoning cleaned up so we can convey that piece of ground to a potential buyer we have, and I would appreciate your consideration tonight.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against a proposed rezoning? See nobody else move, I will close the floor for public comment and input. Next item on the agenda this evening is personal appearances. Always an honor to provide some recognition to our staff. Ray Kendall's here this evening from the Parks Department, and we are congratulating Ray Kendall on achieving the designation of Certified Playground Safety Inspector. I'll turn it over to our Parks Director if you have a message or like to say anything else.
Sure, Mr. Mayor and Board. Thank you very much. Ryan and I are thrilled that we were able to send Ray to... It was an extensive course. He had a lot of books and things of that that he had to study. The rules and regulations through NRPA are getting stronger all the time regarding playground safety, as they should, and Ray took it upon himself, studied... I know he studied really hard. He was stressed a few days, and I will say that about 30 to 40% of the people that take this test don't pass it on the first time. And Ray succeeded in doing that, passing it on the first time, and we're thrilled that he did that, and congratulations to you, Ray.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ray. Got your official certification. I'd like to present to you. We'll grab a photo. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Are there any questions or items that the Board would like to discuss on the consent agenda? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. Next, we'll move on to ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, I will be recusing myself from this first item as my husband sits on the Board of Directors for Platte Clay, so...
Okay. If you want to excuse yourself, once we're done with this item, we'll come and get you.
Okay. Thank you.
First item under ordinances this evening is a motion approving Bill Number 42, 2023, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director. An ordinance amending Chapter 400 of the Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately 2.73 acres along the west side of Sandbar Drive to C General Commercial District as requested by Platte Clay Electric Cooperative. David, do you have anything else to add here?
I'd just like to add that the property is currently zoned M Industrial in the area of the fueling station. Platte Clay Electric would like to sell that property to a new buyer. We require commercial zoning for gas stations, and so that's what prompted the rezoning request. There's also a minor subdivision final plat that was associated with that that staff is able to review, and that's ready for recording. If the rezoning is approved tonight, planning and zoning recommended approval of the rezoning request.
Any questions from the applicant that's here or staff from the Board?
I have one question. By changing this over, then I take it that they're going to end up building a separate building or something there on this to completely disconnect it from the...
I don't think there's a need to build a building because they're self-serviced. You know, they've got the...
Yeah, but utilities right now come down, and they're part of Platte Clay's utilities. So are we going to have easements?
Nope. There are utilities available. If they were to build a new building, the utilities are there, and they could go through a site plan process and build a building.
Okay.
And I think there's a middle area, too. If you look at an aerial map, there's a grassy area, so maybe there's potential for a little building there at some point in the future that's not been brought up to us.
Yeah. Well, I know right now it's all part of...
If there are no other questions from the Board, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 400 of the Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately 2.73 acres along the west side of Sandbar Drive to C General Commercial District as requested by Platte Clay Electric Cooperative.
Make a motion to approve on first read?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 400 of the Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately 2.73 acres along the west side of Sandbar Drive to C General Commercial District as requested by Platte Clay Electric Cooperative.
You can approve on second reading?
Oh, second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and the ordinance passes three to zero with Alderman Barker recusing herself from consideration. Congratulations and best of luck. Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it.
Next ordinance this evening is a motion approving Bill Number 43, 2023, presented by David Pavlich, the Community Development Director. An ordinance approving the final plat of West Major Frontage Edition, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon. David?
This final plat is for property that's owned by a railroad property. Plating of the property is listed as one of the requirements of the sales agreement that the city entered to.
Anything to add from Planning and Zoning Liaison?
There's nothing.
Any questions from the Board? If we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of West Major Frontage Edition, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
Make a motion to approve on first reading?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of West Major Frontage Edition, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
Make a motion to approve. One second.
Second. Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous. Ordinance passes four to zero. Next item is a motion approving Bill Number 44, 2023, presented by Carolyn Yatsuk, our Economic Development Director. An ordinance amending the City of Carney, Missouri's Enhanced Enterprise Zone Policy. Carolyn?
Mayor and Board, good evening. I'd like to just provide a little bit of background. In 2009, the City of Carney established an Enhanced Enterprise Zone, which is also known as an EEZ, and the purpose was to encourage job creation. The incentive offers new and expanding businesses local property tax abatement, and it works in coordination with state incentives. Eligible business clusters must fall within the National North American Industry Classification System, which is also called the NICS Codes, and all of those are and have been approved by the State of Missouri. As I mentioned before, in 2009, it was established here in Carney. A boundary was established. Preferred business clusters were decided on and selected, and a policy was created that talked about the terms and the amount of incentives. In 2011, the Board of Aldermen further expanded the preferred business clusters by ordinance. So bringing us more recent, at the November 6th Board of Aldermen meeting, the Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board was reconstituted. A lot of the terms had expired. So since that happened, the EEZ Board did meet on November 15th to review the existing policy, and the policy included reference to the State of Missouri's incentive. That's changed multiple times over the years, and so the Board recommended just eliminating any mention of state statute, that we would just stick with the local incentives for the purpose of our policy. Eligible business clusters were also reviewed, and we compared those to the list of industries that are approved by the State of Missouri. So there were a lot more. We're pretty limited in the focus, and so the Board discussed it and recommended expanding the list of eligible businesses to allow for a variety of business types. And finally, the policy itself was reviewed. So in the policy that we had, it stated that the city must abate 50% for 10 years. We wanted it to be more discretionary than that, and so that language was revised and taken out of the policy. So the Board did meet again after that initial meeting and reviewed the proposed new policy. It was before you tonight. They also reviewed the ordinance, and they recommended unanimously approval.
Great. Thanks for that presentation. Are there any questions from the Board to staff on the proposed policy? Seeing none, if we could read the proposed ordinance by title only, the first reading, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Carney, Missouri's Enhanced Enterprise Zone Policy.
You can approve on first read?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Carney, Missouri's Enhanced Enterprise Zone Policy.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and ordinance passes four to zero. Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions. Our only item to discuss this evening is a motion approving Resolution 49, 2023, presented by Sheila Ernst, our City Administrator. A resolution approving the Travelers Insurance Renewal for 2024 Property Casualty Liability Vehicle and Work Comp Coverage. Sheila?
So this evening, Paul Long is here. He is our broker agent, and he did all the work to get this renewal to us tonight, and so he is here to talk to you guys about that. I will say that the resolution that is presented does not include the wind hail deductible buydown. If you guys choose to do that, we can amend the resolution to include that. And the reason that it is not included is because it would put us over budget. And for all of our policies, comparing the budget, it would put us over $48,793. Without it, we would be over budget $83 for the year.
Well, thank you all for letting me come out. Sorry I could not make the first meeting of the month, so I'll try not to take more than 30, 45 minutes of your time. Sheila told me not to. So anyway, but yes, so I'm coming out. You know, we did a lot this year. The staff really did jump in this year, and they helped us go through all of the policies, all of the buildings, all of the vehicles, all the equipment, and I think we have a really good outlook now on what we had before. So in doing that, though, I mean, there were several increases as far as things that weren't currently insured or that were currently underinsured. So what I've tried to do here, and I think Sheila gave you one of these, was I just tried to put it in a spreadsheet, and we can dig into the proposal, and I can tell you, we can go over any of the things that you want, but I was just trying to stay high level here. And so basically, what this does is it shows you what the premium was last year and what the premium is this year by line, meaning line of coverage. And then it also shows you what the rate increase was for that line, and then the exposure increase. So what exposure increase means is that was the addition. So we either increased the value of that line, like in property, we increased several areas and also added some things that weren't on there, including taking the water plant from $2 million to $9 million in coverage, and that was a recommendation by Travelers. And so I have replacement cost estimators, all of those things that are done. That's how they come up with those numbers and those figures. And then you can see, for instance, we took a rate decrease in the inland marine, but we went up 40% because there were a lot of things that weren't covered that we put back on the insurance. So again, I hope this kind of helps explain to, you know, where the rate increase came from and what the exposure increase was. We did have a good thing happen in workers' compensation. Your workers' compensation is governed by your NCCI experience mod, and so what that means is they look at your claims and your premium payment ability on a three-year basis, and you were at a 1.02 prior to this year, and it had gone up last year, and you're back down to a 0.92, which helped because there was a slight increase in premium, plus we had increased the payroll as well. As I go through this, I gave you this market outlook, and we get these every year. This is done by an outside firm, and if you'll turn to page 17, this should kind of give you an idea of nationwide what is happening in the insurance market. And I bring these out each year, and if you kind of look here as far as nationwide they're estimating is going to happen in these lines of business, you'll see that you're well within range and mostly under range. The closest one you are is, of course, in the property, but I will let you know that Missouri is considered a catastrophe exposure, and the reason is with the hail claims. Over the last two years, we've paid an extreme amount of hail claims in the state of Missouri. So that's one of the biggest... And so it goes into more detail with each line of coverage why some of these things have increased, and so I'm not going to sit here and read this to you, but this can help as you do your comparison across the board. So the other thing that increased when we increased the property values, of course, the premium on the wind hail buydown was increased. Last year, we went from a flat deductible to a $250,000 flat deductible is what Travelers offered. So you purchased a wind hail buydown to buy that down to $100,000 flat per occurrence, and that was $21,000 last year. Well, so this year, Travelers has increased your deductible to a 2% $100,000 per occurrence. So what that means is that you'd have to have $100,000 in total claims in wind and hail only. This is just wind and hail only before the policy would kick in. Once it kicks in, then you would have a 2% deductible on by building. So if the building's worth $1 million, you would have a 2% deductible on there or a $20,000 deductible on that building. So just taking that into light, I did do several different quotes as far as ways to look at the wind hail buydown. Most of them were considerably expensive. I just chose to put in the proposal the one which we call Option 4, and basically, that was only insuring the large buildings. And when I mean large buildings, I meant that it goes with the buildings that were... It's in your proposal packet, but I won't make you go there. But basically, all the buildings that are over $1 million, except for the museum, which is about $800,000. The museum's in there, too. It doesn't show on here, but we added it back in after Sheila and I looked at it. We thought that might be important. But again, these wind hail deductibles have climbed. I remember when they first came out about six years ago, of course, they were cheap, but now that Missouri's getting hit as much as they are, we're seeing them climb the premium as well. So Sheila said, you know, you had, you know, kind of a deal on the table to not approve the wind hail deductible. And I'll just kind of give you a couple stories. I mean, we do a large amount of public entity, and actually, our largest client has $1.2 billion in property. And so they have been self-insuring their wind hail deductible for about 15 years. And so what they do is they started out, they just started out putting the premium back each year that they would have paid, and they put that in a fund, and then they managed that fund over the years, and in their case, they never have gotten hit, and they've actually grown that fund to a rather large sum that they're able to use in other areas, you know, of the city government. So that is an option, and if you choose to do that, we can help you, you know, put that together and make sure that, you know, you track it properly and those kinds of things. That is an option because, like I said, $48,000 is a pretty big premium compared to what it was last year, and with the increase that we've seen in just the rate increase plus the exposure increase, I know that's hurting your budget. So those are kind of some of the high-level things that I wanted to talk about. What kind of questions do you all have for me?
So I had a meeting with Megan in your office, and Sheila, I had a lot of questions. And really, what I wanted to make sure was crystal clear to the Board is not all of this increase is due to rate increase. We did have... So I appreciate the time there of putting together this spreadsheet that really shows what our actual rate increase is due to exposure increase due to things being underinsured or not insured. So a big piece of it is the exposure increase that's showing our costs. But is there an option maybe to go month to month? I really... Because we did not go out to market, right? We just reshop with Travelers?
We didn't this year. We did last year, and I have that list of the companies that we went to last year. If you remember, MPR was the only other option that was offered to us. I did speak to MPR this year. I go to their annual meeting. I'm an agent for them as well, and they were not entertaining any other cities of your size this year as far as to go... This would be midterm for them because their policies are July to July. I did talk to Mike Sendell, and he did, he said, you know, that if your losses were still decent, he wanted to see how some things finished up, that he would be possibly interested in looking again. I would have to get with him in March of this year. And I, you know, we talked about that last year, and we decided to just to stay with Travelers because really, last year, you didn't have much of an increase, even with the wind hail deductible. So you currently are sitting at $230,000 in insured losses over the last five years. Of those 230,000, 2023, it was your largest at $73,000. So that picture isn't as good as it was the year that we took you to MPR last year, but if the Board wishes, I mean, I will definitely go out and take a look at them. EMC is another insurance company that we use with cities. They chose not to offer a quote last year or this year, but they said they're still willing to look. We don't necessarily go to market every year. Our goal is to take you to market at least every three years, but I do understand that this is a large increase. So I'll do whatever the Board would like.
So explain to me why, what the benefits are of not going to market every year?
Market fatigue. It's not like shopping car insurance. This is very detailed. You can ask Sheila what your staff went through just to get the information, okay? Then you have to take it to this company, and so that underwriter has to do, it's usually a 30- to 45-day process to underwrite the quote. And so if you keep taking it to market every year and we don't go with them, then after a while, they're like, oh, it's Carney. They're not going to do anything, you know? And that's what happens. So what we try and do, we have great relationships with our companies, and they know if we bring it to market that there's a reason, right? So we really try to stick to that three-year mark unless there is a considerably high, you know, increase. In your case, really, that increase was, as I've shown you, was within market standards across the board. And so we did, like I said, I did talk to EMC because they just didn't offer me a quote last year, and they said that they would possibly look next year, and I have talked to MPR, and they were not willing to look right now, but they said they would talk to me next year closer to their annual renewal date.
So is there an option to maybe go month to month instead of a full-year renewal?
Yeah. No, it's an annual renewal anyway. So the policy is an annual policy no matter what. How you pay is completely up to you. So you can pay the premium month to month, and this is a standard market company, so there's not a shortfall if you cancel earlier or we end up moving to another carrier.
So just, MPR is still attractive for me?
Yeah.
So that's my only questions. Are there any other questions from the Board? Mr. Long?
I would just like to know what's driving that 32% increase on cyber. Is it just purely a lot of new equipment?
It's based on your revenues, and the revenues had increased compared to what they were when the cyber policy was originally written, and so that was the increase there. But cyber policies have been increasing at about 100% rate. We've actually seen them level off a little bit more this year. And you, you know, as you can see here, they're estimating about a 15%, 0% to 15% for 2024. I have seen, in the last two years, I've seen 100 and even 150% renewals. I remember the first cyber policy I ever wrote was for a city, and it was a $3 million policy, and this city was a city of about 15,000 population, and that premium was $2,000. And that was in 2012. So that city currently, I still have them, and they currently pay about $30,000. So that's where the market goes.
My thoughts on, and I'm just one voice of five up here, but on the wind hail deductible buydown, more than doubling in cost, obviously, because of last year, right? I mean, we try to mitigate the risk for the city in our taxpayer dollars. I'm comfortable not buying it down, and we'd have to, a budget amendment or a decision to make in the event of a loss, I guess, so we can maybe have that discussion in the event that we would need it. But that's my thoughts. I'm okay with considering the renewal as presented by staff.
My question on that is, the main reason you have is in case you have a tornado. And if we have a tornado, we've got several buildings that are close together. If that tornado were hit, right, we could have several buildings affected all at one time. That's where I struggle a little bit with that, just because our buildings are kind of close together down here. We've got here, one, two, three, four, five. We've got five buildings right here. If a tornado lands right in the middle, it could take out a whole five.
City of Oliver this year, or I'm sorry, 2022, I insure the hospital, the city, and the school system. It was about a $10 million hail claim for all of that, you know, because everything was right there together. But, you know, just remember how your deductible works. You have to have... You have to have at least a hundred thousand in loss before it kicks in, then you have two percent. So on the smaller buildings, that's why we didn't, we didn't put it on there because it's going to be small anyway, right? So two percent of fifty thousand isn't very much. But that's why we, in that quote four that I did, I just quoted the billion, buildings over a million dollars because that's where, where it's going to hit.
Did they get FEMA and SEMA? I mean, I'm guessing that when, was it just a thunderstorm or was it a tornado?
We had a severe hailstorm. We've actually had two in southwest Missouri. We had twenty-two and twenty-three. We had another one this year. So a lot of those things that got fixed in twenty-two got hit again in twenty-three.
If it is a tornado, we're going to most likely be declared in a disaster area. So we will be, we're in a unique situation, right? We're, because we are a local government, and we would be able to have some relief through that.
Yeah, we're talking, so the last five years, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in claims, seventy thousand within our last year, but...
And they were vehicles?
And those are all under the five-thousand-dollar deductible. So those, those haven't even...
Twenty-one thousand dollars, I could, that was, I mean, it's still a lot of money, but it was, but with the same coverage more than doubling, I'm not for sure if I can, if that, for that cost, if that mitigates the risk for me to spend fifty thousand dollars. I, I much, I'd feel better with looking at spending that fifty thousand dollars in the event of loss, but that's my thought. I do think you can over-insure. I'm not saying that this is over-insuring by any means, but... Yeah, I've said my, my thoughts there, so not trying to shove it down anybody's throat or, or sway, but I would like the Board's thoughts and feedback and make sure that we do understand as Mr. Long mentioned, how that deductible works. Any other questions, items of discussion on what's been presented? Thank you so much for your time. Please, once again, pass on my appreciation to Megan for meeting with myself and Sheila and putting together some of this information.
Yeah, I apologize, I wasn't, I wasn't there, but...
And our condolences to you and to my listeners.
That was kind of a crazy day, so, you know, thanks for giving me a little bit of time to put this together. I thought, this, this helped, I mean, other than, you know, because that proposal, I sent it to you and it's that thick. And so I thought, you know, after Sheila and I talked this morning, I thought this would, would help a lot more.
If there are no other questions, if we could entertain a motion to approve Resolution forty-nine twenty-two-three, approving the Travelers Insurance Renewal for twenty-twenty-four property casualty liability vehicle and work comp coverage.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Resolution is passed unanimously, four to zero. Thank you. Safe travels.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas. Next item is items for review and presentation. Our November twenty-twenty-three monthly financial report by our Finance Director Cathy Arker.
Thank you. I'm pleased to present the monthly financial report for our, that ended November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. The year-to-date total revenues were seventeen million, seventeen, seventeen million, six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, seventeen cents. Year-to-date expenditures coming to eighteen million, four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-one dollars and eighteen cents, bringing the difference to seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and forty-five cents. You've asked before for a statement on sales tax, and our year-to-date sales tax is still trending slightly above, or slightly above the previous year, so twenty-twenty-three is slightly ahead of twenty-twenty-two. And then also, this is for the month ended November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, but I did want to point out that since our last meeting, there has been a payment received in the December sales tax collections of that first marijuana, additional sales tax. So that was received in December, and that will be in the next month's report, but I wanted to allow you guys to know.
So it doesn't appear to be anything that's really sticking out that's super concerning?
Yeah, everything's still in line, in alignment with the budget.
Any questions from the Board on our report? Thank you for your time in preparing that. Next item is Mayor's Communications. Couple items I'll briefly mention. I had the pleasure to present with our Parks Director two proclamations this evening at the Kearney School District Awards Ceremony. One was for our state championship swimmer, sophomore Whittaker Stewart. A second proclamation was congratulating Coach Logan Minnick, his staff coaches, and the football team on their class-four state championship. So always a, a good opportunity to show our appreciation to the kids of our community. The Board, all of us, have the honor and privilege to attend the Magical Downtown Christmas Celebration and Parade. What another amazing fireworks display by Kearney resident Bill Scholl. And should be no surprise, but our float that we did absolutely no work on. All the credit goes to the Street Department, their guys. We did bring home some hardware. And the Parks Department somehow brought home some hardware too. So two, two of the city floats brought home a beautiful lighted trophy. So I always appreciate staff volunteering their time and efforts to show up and support that wonderful evening. So thank you, and thank you to all the extra police officers, the fire district, and everybody, the volunteers that helped make sure that that was a successful event. Another thing I have is, I can't believe we're already this time of year, but I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and hopefully you get to spend some time with family and loved ones. So we'll move on to the City Administrator's Report.
I just want to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed Friday and Monday for the holidays, and the next regular Board Meeting will be Tuesday, January second, at six-thirty PM right here.
Aldermen Discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I just want to wish everyone a warm and wonderful holiday, Merry Christmas and Happy New Years. Please be safe out there and pass the kindness on.
Alderman Holt?
Nope, I'm good.
Alderman Lehman?
Just wanted to congratulate the city, the school district, and our Parks Department at the opportunity to go to the Quay County Economic Development Keystone Awards. All three of those entities were awarded, have awarded awards. So it was, it was fun to, to be able to be present for that. The lighted parade was, again, was very fun. And the fireworks was great as usual. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank, or congratulate Ray. Great job. Those tests are not easy and lots of stress, but it paid off, so congratulations. And last but certainly not least, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Alderman Barber?
I'm just going to add my good wishes for a great holiday for everyone.
That concludes our meeting. Can we entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Propose? We are adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.